Thank you.
All right, welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for April 23rd, 2025. If you want to find out more about our study sessions and our tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticvg@gmail.com. And we are going to pick off, pick up where we left off last week. We have a 5-3 to play here. And.
Jason, could we review what White did on his roll?
Uh, yeah, we had, this was our last play. This was a pretty automatic play.
Okay, then what did White?
Anchored with a 3-2.
3-2, okay, thank you. And now we get 5-3, thank you.
5-3 to play.
Excellent. So, hey, he made the point I wanted to make.
Yeah, that's right. So unfortunately, we will not be making the three points. So if you could offer me some candidate plays, I'll be happy to put them in the slide-o. Notice the score, it's Crawford, we're leading Crawford five away, so pretty much like.
Should we, should we run now that he has no board from the 18?
Maybe, so Donald, what is the play you want?
18, 13, 18, 15.
Okay, I think very much worth considering.
Yeah, I think that's very reasonable.
Uh, 13, 8, 13, 10 is also very much worth considering.
13, 8, 13, 10.
Indirect shot.
Yes, leave an indirect shot, they only hit us with 6-1, 5-2, 4-3. Is there anything else we might consider?
Actually, I think 13 to 5 has some merit.
Yes, 13 to 5 does have some.
I'm sliding the point I want to make next.
That's right.
He gets 11 shots and we get a lot of returns.
That's right. Let's take a quick look at all these plays. So here's the play that Donald suggested. So Donald is figuring, okay, well, we got a big lead in the race, 24 pips after the play. If we can get away with this, we'll be in pretty good shape. They hit us with all threes and 2-1 and double fours and double sixes. So I think that's 16 shots. But if we get away with it, we're in pretty good shape. Okay, let's look at this other play.
Only six hits.
Only six hits.
Thirty-six.
So, uh, that's kind of the safest of the three that we're considering. And then there's this play, slot the 5 point.
Gives 11 hits.
11 hits. As Bill points out, this is the point we really would like to make next. So those are our options.
It also doesn't strip the midpoint like, uh, 13, 10, 13.
So this, okay, so I would say not only is it stripping the midpoint, but it, it, it leaves us with a certain amount of inflexibility.
Yes.
With the stripped 18 point as well as 13 point.
Yes.
Definitely a tough play.
Yep.
Okay, maybe we should go ahead and vote.
Hmm, so I'll shrink this. And there it is. But all I see is 0% on all four of them, so I don't understand what that means.
No, it's, it's update, updating now.
It, it takes a little bit of updating if people vote.
You should see the votes after your vote, I think. Like you should see the amounts.
Okay, all zeros so far. Hmm, now it says, hmm, can't reach this page, it's on my computer. Oh, now I see some voting. Yeah, I see 18, 13, 18, 15 got 67%. Okay.
That means, that means just two people out of three. It's not an overwhelming.
And one did 13. Now how do I pick my 13, 5 vote thing?
No, not even you, Bill.
I'm on slide-o, oh, well, I didn't vote yet. Um, I'm on the thing that shows me the voting, but where do I make my, cast my vote?
Well, you should be able to do it right there. You should be able to select one.
Okay, I'm trying to pick 13, 5. It's not doing anything.
Well, there's a, there's a radio box where you can.
Shit.
That's okay.
Okay, we have four votes. Three of them are to clear that 18 point, so let's go ahead and do that. I hate it when it does this.
Do we get 5-3 again?
No, no, yes. Uh, all right, we can't look at this because the XG file got sort of corrupted. So I, I can't really look at, see what, uh, there it is, okay.
Oh, there it is.
All right, so it's okay. Uh, yeah, so clearing the 18 point was right. This was the play that Donald suggested.
That's the best play by far.
The other ones were slightly behind. Okay, but our race lead is not that great right now.
Because of the 20 pips they just picked up.
Yeah. Okay, now we got another 5-3 to play.
Well, you gotta make the 10 point.
Yeah, this looks pretty easy, so let's not even. Vote on this.
Anything else would be foolish.
Okay, now we have a 3-1 to play.
5 point.
Yeah, this looks pretty easy, too.
Only thing that's safe.
Okay, now we got something worth talking about.
That was what, that's what XG came up with for double ones? Really?
Yeah, that's a little, that's a little weird.
Not 8 to 7, huh? That was not part of it, huh? Okay.
All right, 6-5 to play.
8 to 7 isn't very useful because, uh, the 17 is 6 away from the 23, so that's already the best covering number for the 23, I think. Yeah, um, okay, so 6-5.
What about 13-2? Seems.
Yeah, 13-2.
13-2, yeah. Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, true.
Boring but safe.
Okay, I, I threw in another one, which is, uh, 10-5, 10-4.
Yes, that's, has merit.
Okay, let's, let's look at these two plays. The 13-2 would look like this. The other one looks like this. I have to admit, I'm less excited about this because these two checkers now are somewhat dillyed.
Alright. And you're losing a landing, uh, spot on the.
Yeah, that's right, losing a landing spot, that's, that is important.
Yeah.
All right, let's vote.
Yeah, I think you gotta keep the landing spot because we've shown that we're good at rolling 5-3.
All right, all the votes are for 13 to 2, so we'll do that. Hey, 5-3 to play.
I'm just right, we're good at rolling 5-3.
I told you.
Well, the XG doesn't work, Jason, that's why you can't check?
Oh, no, it's fine, it's working fine.
It's on. So 13-2 is right.
Yeah. Okay, how about our 5-3 now, after they played, uh, double twos and they, they plugged their hole that they made last time?
13-5?
Yeah, 13-5, is there anything else we might consider?
I don't think so.
I don't see it.
Man, I mean, 10-2 makes the 2 point, but at the cost of leaving an indirect, so I don't think that's correct.
Yeah, 10 to 2, you know, right, it does make the 4 point board, but it leaves them 4-3 and 6-1 to hit. And they do have a 4 point board now, 4 and a half point board.
Yes.
Uh, I, I think Therese is, uh, yeah.
Yeah, Therese, you have two instances of this running again, I believe.
And when we roll 5-3 next time, we can land them both on this, we'd only have.
And, and that should be easy because we've shown our skill in that now.
Yeah, 13-5, I think that's the best.
That was my only one?
What?
All right, the votes are for 13 to 5.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so then now they've, they ran out a checker with, uh, 5-4. They're running out of time, I think that's why they had to do that.
Yeah.
Now we got a 6-4 to play.
Uh, did you check?
Here we go.
Did you check whether we should consider doubling him?
It's Crawford.
Crawford.
Oh, sorry, my bad. Never mind.
All right, 6-4 to play.
8-2, 5-1.
Okay, 8-2, 5-1, I got another one, it's.
Or 10-4, 10-6.
Yeah, 10, 10-6, 10-4.
I think that's actually better, that'd be my vote.
It gets better, yeah.
Yeah.
All those builders?
We don't need the 7, we don't need a point 7 away from him.
Right.
Okay, let's vote.
We're blocking, we're blocking 6-1, we're blocking 4-3. Big deal. There's other good ways to play 6-1 anyway.
All right, all the votes are for that play. We do have a nice race lead, that's good, right? We could.
I don't see it.
Win the match here. Okay, let's go back and look to see how we did. Yep, looks fine. All right, they're trying to run out of here. Now usually if you're behind, you gotta, you gotta hang back, but you know, we do have a lot of firepower to try to blitz this checker. Okay, 6-1 to play.
So I'd make the 2 point, for sure.
Yeah, 8-2, 4-3.
And then 8, 8-7, 8-8.
I think 4-3.
Yeah, perhaps.
There's probably no more, there's probably no more contact.
Right, they're, they're very likely to run out of here.
The only thing that keeps them there is double fours.
And double twos.
Double twos.
Double twos, right, thank you.
All right, everybody likes to fill the holes. Let's go ahead and do that, plug in the hole.
Double 6 is one.
Yeah.
We, we, we behind in the race now.
Uh, yeah, we are behind in the race by nine pips now, that's not good.
Well, you got, you got across twice.
Yeah.
So I think it's 13-12 and 13-9.
Yeah.
You don't waste anything that way either.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, check one of the nine points in a good spot.
Well, 8-4, 13-12 is good as well. I mean, it's no, not bad putting stuff on the 4 either, so.
That's also not bad. Although I, I would say that checkers on the 13 point are not very well placed, which is probably why 13-12, 13-9 is pretty good.
Yeah, probably better by a slight margin, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the one thing, it puts diversity of checkers in the outfield. And so if you want to bear off first, it allows diversity to come to the 6 point, so you have zero wastage. And then you're able to bear off sooner. So you line them up on different points so that multiple numbers play to get to your 6.
Right, right. All right, well, everybody likes this play, 13-12, 13-9, so we'll do it. And, and as we discussed, there's very little difference. Um, I wouldn't even necessarily watch this, it doesn't.
13-12, 8-4 was slightly better, huh?
Yeah, but.
Point 001.
Yeah, I can barely even trust that.
An argument for the 8-4 is just to preserve the 1 maybe for another time on the 13?
Uh, yeah, right, it makes, it makes your 1s productive. Then, I mean, that's one way of arguing it, and I think Eric pointed out that, you know, putting more checkers on the 4 point is, can't be a bad idea. I, I, I'll tell you what, though, a play like that, if I'm playing doubles, I don't want to spend any time arguing over it, right?
Exactly.
Pick, pick a move and, and roll with it.
Yep. All right, here we go.
But I mean, playing the.
8 to 3. 12 to 6.
12, 6, 9, 4.
12, 6, 9, 3.
Yeah.
2 sixes, can't do that, illegal.
Good try, Donald.
12, 6, 9, 4.
9-4, you're right.
Yeah.
Not 8-3, 9-4 is better.
Okay, so I want to say why I like 8-3 is because it keeps your two checkers in the outfield on different points, and that gives you more options later on the road. Tom is a big believer in spreading those checkers out in the outfield for more options.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, decreases wastage because it gives you more options to come to the 6 point where you won't waste checkers coming in deep.
Correct, correct.
You have converted me to 8, uh, 3, so.
And I think the difference is going to be very small.
Yes.
So, all right, looks like that. I, I managed to convince you all.
Yeah, you got my vote.
It looks pretty, or two.
It actually said 12, 6, 9, 4 was better.
Yeah, they're, they're the same.
I should have stayed on my original idea.
So, so Bill, I wouldn't even go so far as to say that, that this is saying that it's better. Um, there's a certain amount of noise built in the system that I, I really cannot say an equity difference of 2 millipoints is of any significance.
Okay, and what's the ply? So is it 3?
What's the what?
Is it 3 ply, Jason?
Oh, this is XG Roller Plus.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a very short rollout.
Okay.
It's the best setting for accuracy on XG.
Uh, for like speed versus accuracy, it's, it's really very good.
I mean, short of an actual rollout.
Right, short of an actual rollout, it, it's really quite strong.
8, 6, 9, 7?
8, 6, 9, 7.
No, I would say 8, 6, 9, 8, 2-1. I think the 2-1 is a better, better ace.
Hey, I just want to throw one more out there, which is 8 to 4.
Wow. Okay, that's hard to believe.
I think you're talking me into this 9-6-2-1 business.
I like that.
I like the 9-6-2-1.
Keeping a checker on the 8 point means all of our 4s are going to play to the 4 point, that's going to be good. In order to win this, we need, we're going to need to roll some big numbers.
8, 6, I don't see it, 8, 6, 9, 7, is that on there?
Yeah, it's the one you said, it's 9, 6, 8, 7.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
The same thing, yeah.
All right. So I think the winning vote is the one that Eric came up with, 9 to 6, 2 to 1, definitely an interesting idea. That's what I voted for, I thought that was. Nice play.
Well.
Again, these differences are so small that it, it hardly matters, and you don't want to spend any time thinking about this.
But the 2-1 was another option, that, the one that beat it was also a 2-1.
Yeah, right.
8, 5, 2.
Uh, well, yeah, so, yeah, both the top plays are 2-1s, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
8, 5, 6 off.
I think this is clear, I don't think we should vote on it. This, but this, this does do a couple of good things, I mean, it gets the checker off. And now we've got four checkers on the 6 point, four checkers on the 5 point. Um.
So can, can you go back to the, to the 2-1 plays list?
Oh, sure.
I, I didn't see where 8-7 was. Uh, which one was the 8-7 play? Uh, I think.
5, 6, 8, 7.
Oh, okay, it's minus 13 million points, okay.
I think I can explain why, I think it's just because, you know, in this kind of a bear-in, you don't really want a checker on the 7 point. It, it's not a great place to be. Um, Mulchi has an interesting lecture that's out on the internet somewhere, um, where he, he spends a whole lecture just talking about bear-in plays, um, some of them to save gammon and things like that. And, and he talks about, you know, checkers on the 7 point, uh, they're really sort of inflexible. Uh, you, you don't get a lot of options. And if you roll sixes, you're forced to put things on the one point where, you know, you don't necessarily want a bunch of checkers on the one point.
The, I think the thing is, if you have, uh, if, if you don't have an, anything on the ace, and then the next turn you roll an ace, you have nothing productive to do with the ace. You don't, you don't use the ace to bear off.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, so here's the play where, I, I don't think we're going to vote on this, this is clear. We're behind in the race slightly, uh, 58 to 61. And this lets us, you know, do something useful when we roll the big doubles.
Yes, we're set up for double 6 and double 5 in either order for our next two rolls.
That's right.
Jason, roll well.
The wrong guy got double 6.
Yeah, wrong guy got that.
And it's, no, it's not.
It's not over yet.
No, it's Crawford.
It's Crawford, there's, there's, there's no cube here. Just roll it out to the end. Well, you.
5, 5 off.
5 off.
5 off.
5 off.
4 off, 6-5 maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yes, that's, that's worth consideration.
I would prefer that, because if you roll double 5s, you're going to have to bring people down. That's correct.
You need to get four bet on with double 5s, yes.
So this is, Dany Climen would call this a, a true bear-off because this is like a bear market, you're not doing very good. If you do this, you get to take four checkers off with double 5s. And now you're, you're, you may be right back in the game. So I think, uh, I've been thinking about, like, and I gave a presentation at the Cherry Blossom last week, and I'm thinking about some topics for next year, and I had one idea, uh, which I would call desperation plays. Things you should do when, uh, the, the going gets really tough and you're just trying to find a miracle way to win. So this, this qualifies as a desperation play.
Yep.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And one way, one way you can think about it is, I, if we're going to win this game, we have to roll some big doubles. So let's just assume that we roll those big doubles, uh, and let's make sure that they are productive.
Maximize the productivity, yes.
Because if we, if we spend the rest of this game rolling little numbers, then it doesn't matter.
Yeah, you can't win no matter what.
Very well explained, Jason, very well.
Yes, I'm, I feel desperate right now.
You could always just bean your opponent with a cube.
Yeah, uh, that's a viable strategy, uh, I may or may not have done that in the past.
Sorry, what, what's this strategy?
Oh, don't listen to Bill Spruce.
Uh.
It had to do with.
Oh, like, uh, beat their head with the cube, I see, yeah.
You want to double the Crawford game.
All right, so the votes are in.
He wants to pick up the cube and throw it in his hand, I think is what he meant.
That's correct.
All right, so we're going to make the desperation play, let's go back and see. Uh, and it's about the same. It's, it's also hard to measure the difference because, uh, the scenario where this works, i- it's pretty thin.
Exactly.
Part of the reason, I think part of the reason it's so hard to measure is even with a double 5, we're still an underdog. If it were slightly different where a double 5 would actually be fully enough to get us right back in it, then it would be more measurable.
That's right. And, uh, boy, this is bad.
Oh.
Wow.
Zero bet on.
6, 3, 5, 4.
Yep, 6, 3, 5, 4.
Probably.
6, 3, 5, 4.
Sorry, how do we win this? Five checkers to the 6.3 to the 8.5 to the 13 point and 2 to the 24 point.
3, 5, 4.
Just re, reset the board, in other words.
Exactly.
Okay, so if we roll the 5s now, then the following roll, we're going to need.
I will have to explain how the numeration works.
What if we do it this way?
Yeah, I, I think that's what I would do, because therefore, anytime you run, when you run out of 5s, you don't have to bring down one from the 6.
Give you a private lesson.
Double 5s, double, double 5, double 6 takes 4 off.
But if we do it this way, now the next roll, if we roll, let's just assume we roll double 5s. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, take those four checkers off, now what, what do we need?
Double 3s or higher suffice for the second roll?
3s are higher. If we do it this way, now roll double 5s, what are we going to need next turn?
You would need double 4s or better?
Uh-huh.
That's worse.
Yep.
Yep, that's worse.
Now that's why 6-3, 6-5 is correct.
Yeah.
And again, this is, this is a very narrow way of, uh, path to victory, because we are assuming that our opponent is not going to be off in two rolls. That's awfully tough for them to do.
I would point out, I would point out, this is one of the wonderful things about Backgammon, is that we're highly unfavored to win this, but it's still very stimulating to figure out how you can make a very tiny chance work. And it's very satisfying when you actually set it up and it does work. And you had thought about it, and that's why you never give up, and you always, even the small plays that would seem like this is hopeless are not hopeless.
So if, if I may regale you with a story. Uh, the very first, uh, ABT tournament I played in was the, uh, Los Angeles Tournament in 2004. And I made the, I seemingly foolish decision to enter the open division in my first tournament. Um, I don't know if that was a good idea. I got absolutely creamed in my first match, I think I lost 11-0. Maybe I got a point, I don't know. Um, I never lost a match again until I made it all the way to the finals. I went on this incredible run and just wiped out everybody. And in the finals, now as the person coming out of the loser's bracket, I had to win twice. And I was just about to win that first match when my opponent set himself up perfectly to roll double 5s and then double 4s. Um, and he made one of these desperation-type moves to set up that sequence, and he got it to win the tournament. Uh, I, I thought that was, uh, a really great on his part, too.
Who was your opponent, Jason, do you remember?
A guy by the name of Wayne Jeffcoat, who I doubt anybody's heard of. Uh, every once in a while, I still get an email from Wayne Jeffcoat. And, uh, he's a good dude. And, uh.
Well, here's, here's.
This will be out on the internet somewhere, maybe Wayne is watching, hello, Wayne, nice to hear from you.
The point psychologically, game-wise, though, is you know how when you, you would be tempted as the game is winding down to put little effort into some of these things? And some of the, uh, most stimulating, uh, coolest moves you can make might be one like this that ends up winning you the game, and you know that you, and, you know, that you set it up properly.
Yes, it's, it's smoke equity, right, Tom?
Oh, absolutely, so you want to put, this is just like, uh, you know, this would be a time when you, somebody starts getting ready to lose, they're like pre-losing. And, uh, this is a time when this decision could be just as important as one of the ones you made early in the game, so you ought to be just as, uh, vigilant and thinking at this point as you would earlier with some other critical decisions.
Yeah, that's right. I have a mantra that I say to myself in situations where, um, I'm really getting creamed in a game. Uh, I say to myself, all right, I, I just need to find a way to win this. I don't know what that way is, but I need to hunt for it, and I, I'm not, I'm certainly not going to give up. Uh, I have to just look for ways to win this game. And you can turn hopeless positions into, into victories, and I think we've all done it. Okay, let's make this play.
I, I will just add, doing a little quick mental arithmetic, while making the right play is very satisfying, comparing it to making the right play in earlier situations. In this case, I think making the right play is worth 1/10 of 1 millipoint. And, and that's pretty close, that's not just throwing out a random small number, I think it's worth about 1/10,000 of a point.
Now, good news, XG has an option where I can use, I can set another decimal point, so I'll, I'll do that for you, Rick. Okay, let's go back and look. I don't know, we might need another decimal point, Rick.
Yeah, you have to go another decimal.
It says we have 0.1 chance of winning.
Why 2-1? It's bizarre.
Um.
And it waits for 1.
Well, yeah, but.
Uh, because double 3s, oh, I, I, it's because double 3s also work with that, it's the same, actually, it's the same idea. If you, if you look at this, when you roll double 5s, um, now double 3s work this way also. It's, it's the same concept.
But we were comparing to 6-3, 5-4, so I underestimated it.
Here you go, Rick.
Wait, it was 2/10,000, it's not 1.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're off by a factor of two.
Well, we don't know how much rounding there is on it.
That's right. Boy, boy, are we splitting hairs now.
God, let's, let's get some social scientists running this darn thing instead of.
Case you're wondering what you can do with an advanced math degree, there you go.
Just roll the damn dice already, oh my god.
We've lost Adam.
Alright, um, okay, so now, uh, it's post Crawford, four away, so the cube's coming up here. Should we just, uh, play it?
Probably that. Fourteen, thirteen, eleven looks right.
Okay, let's go ahead and do this.
And the score is what?
One away. It's now post Crawford four away.
Right, okay.
So the question is, do we want to use our free pass here? We get two tries at our free pass.
Assuming we. We, when, as far as I know, whenever we win the opening roll, we take, uh, yeah.
Especially this kind. If it was maybe only a two, one that we won, perhaps then you might drop, but I can't see how you drop this one.
I thought you'd drop if, unless you roll like a six, one or a three, one for the opening roll.
I think, I think Eric is right. If you win the opening roll, you're, you're slightly ahead. You've started some development.
Yes, uh, yeah. I remember reading that recently.
Put it this way, we get two tries at the free pass, but you might wanna just save your free pass for the next game when you really want.
Because if you, if you take it and they gammon you, they win the match.
Yeah, well, that's gonna happen in the next game also.
Do you think that we are more likely to be gammoned now?
If we win the opening roll, we might have a better opening roll.
We did win it.
We did win the opening roll.
On this game, but if we drop now.
That, Brits.
And the ne- if we drop now, we don't get. We get another.
We might not even get an opening.
We might not win the opening roll at all.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's.
But then you would drop on the double, you would drop.
No, you wouldn't, because now it's three away. You don't have a free drop anymore. If you use your free drop, you, you've used it. You don't have it anymore.
I thought you said we had two free drops.
No, we have one free drop, but we have two opportunities to use it. We have to decide when we're gonna use it.
I got it, okay, sorry.
I think we're, we're, we're gonna save it for next time.
This, the, the second opportunity will come if the opponent wins this game non-gammon, like a regular.
Exactly right.
Yeah, yeah. Hmm.
Got it. Thank you.
No problem.
Is there any opening roll where you are worse off than had you, like, is a five, two still better than not winning the opening roll?
Yeah, it is still better. Um, particularly in a score like this where once the cube gets turned, you're gonna wanna save a gammon. That split helps you to get an advanced anchor, which will help stave off gammons.
Even two, one?
James, I think even two, one.
Okay.
With the opening move on a one being thirteen to, uh, what, twelve and six to five still?
Yeah, that's a, that's certainly reasonable. Okay, let's take. I, I, I'm, I'll be pretty sure that this is a, this is a pretty easy take.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a very comfortable take.
Okay, was this, uh, sixty-seven minute point pass? Yeah.
Hit him.
Hit him.
To be right.
Anchor up.
Yeah, make the.
Anchor up, I would guess, yeah.
Okay, this is now gammon save, right?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody likes the, the anchor?
Yeah, let's do it. Only could, only because he has so many builders available.
Yeah, a lot of attack potential. Uh, that, that anchor saves a lot of games. That's really important.
Yes. Yep.
Let's do that. Let, let's go back and just look real quick. See, it's not, it's not particularly close. Look at, look at the gammons. The gammons trade two for one at this score. They're, they're extra powerful. Okay, double threes. We ought to be able to do something useful with this.
Eleven, eight. Eight, five, twice.
How scared of the gammons do we really have to play is the question. Like, can we make the five and the three and get a beautiful board with plots everywhere?
Uh, so Rick is suggesting eight, five, white, six, three twice?
Yeah, more asking than suggesting.
Yeah, I think that might be actually right.
But that leaves too many blocks.
It leaves a lot of plots, but I, I will admit, I have a real amount of time on any double threes early not doing that. It's just so pretty.
Yep. Hits us on the eight point, we get a lot of returns.
Backgammon ain't pretty.
Okay, now, if you made the eight point this way, then.
I have to, I have to go six.
A return.
Thirteen, ten.
So, uh, if we, uh, never mind. No, wait, if we do six, three, we duplicate the two that white needs to cover the bar point. So shouldn't that be worth something?
Yeah.
And it's an unstacking play, so yeah. The only difference is on the thirteen, ten, he can't take advantage on hitting without leaving a lot of returns back. A huge number.
Yeah.
Okay, let's vote.
Um, that's one, this one, uh.
That's an even race. Oh, not anymore, nevermind.
Boy, I don't know. This is really too difficult. Okay. Lots of votes for six to three after making the five point. That's what I picked, but I don't have a lot of.
What about thirteen, ten, two, six, three, two, and leaving the eleven alone?
Okay.
I think that's a pretty balanced play. Uh, if, if we attack on the eleven, they're gonna have to split. That's sorry to, to lose their, their seven point, so.
Big gaps.
Yeah.
Hmm. Well, okay.
Okay, has everybody voted?
Six of us have.
Yeah. Okay.
Seven votes with four thing, options receiving votes.
Yeah. Alright, looks like this is the winner. So like I said, this is the one I picked, but I don't have a ton of conviction about this. I do like the duplication.
Yeah. Uh, but. The thing is, we don't have much to cover the three. We only have the six to cover the three, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, oh, look at this. Alright, Rick Penn gets the smog equity.
Hey.
This is the play we made. Moderate error. Also a moderate error. Okay, uh, they just made their board a little better by seven, five, six, five, and so now we got a five, four to play.
However, we have new four.
Oh, boy.
I think it's thirteen, eight, thirteen.
Twenty-two, thirteen, maybe?
Hmm, I thought about it.
And what was the one, thirteen, eight and what?
Thirteen, nine.
Eight, thirteen, nine.
Give him a two shot.
Three blots, no.
He already has a shot of two.
I would run on the twenty-two. Yeah.
What about eight, three, eight, four?
We eight, four.
Be right back.
And I don't think this is gonna be right, but thirteen, um, thirteen, eight, twenty-two, eighteen does at least duplicate some of their hitting numbers. And it, and it gains us some, um, covering checkers on our own.
Which, sorry, which number is that?
Twenty-two, eighteen, but then instead of continuing it, leave it there and go thirteen, eight.
Alright, I, I'm, I'm gonna bet that the double water.
I think that's got gammon written all over it.
Yes, that's why.
That, yeah, that's the reason. Yeah, I, I think, I still like thirteen, eight, thirteen, nine.
Thirty-eight, thirteen, nine has the, uh, advantage of duplicating twos.
Yep.
There's no duplication with the running play. You have twos to hit in the back, threes, fives and sixes to hit forward. And they are definitely going to hit loose. There's no question about that.
Yep.
If he rolls a two, you think he would hit loose? Take it off the five point?
No.
Oh, he hit on the three, hit it on a three, I got it.
Yeah. Okay, we're voting. About a, it's about a quarter till, we'll, we'll stop here pretty soon. We got a couple more plays in us left. Uh, it looks like thirteen, eight, thirteen, nine is gonna win it. If somebody else has a vote in them.
That's what Bill Powell would vote if he do how to use this to.
Okay, alright, let's do it. Oh, XG doesn't like that play either. Eight, four, eight, three, that's the Janet.
Yay.
Yeah, someone said that. Wow.
Yes, Janet gets the smog equity on this one.
I would never do.
No, that was me.
Wow, and thirteen, nine, eight, three is also.
Nine, eight, three, oh, there's no way. I'm not smart enough to make plays like that.
No, this is a bot play through and through, yeah.
Janet's play is not a bot play. That, this is a decent idea, okay?
Yeah, I, I like that one as well, but I wasn't sure.
Okay, now we got a four, three to play. It might be easier.
Lean it up, six, three, nine, five.
Yeah. Everybody okay with this?
Pretty clear, yeah.
Pretty straightforward, yeah. Okay, let's do it. Okay, five and one. That's not much fun.
No. It's safe, but it's ugly.
Thirteen, eight, thirteen, twelve.
And thirteen, eight, thirteen.
No, eight, eight, three. And six, five, you would have.
Well, stack them up.
Oh.
Yeah, it's ugly, but, um, losing is even uglier.
Eight, three, five, four.
Eight, three, five, four.
That's the optimistic play, definitely.
Okay, I, I guess if we're gonna do that, I wanna throw out eight to two.
Yeah, well, you know, like the same thing.
Two, I think it's, it's better because we have more covering, covering potential in the eight, two, yeah.
I like eight, two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do too. I like it better than mine.
Yeah, I know.
Alright, let's vote.
Neither the one nor the three is duplicating something they can use in there from.
Yeah, right.
That's correct.
Alright, looks like we have lots of fans for eight to two. Alright, that's gonna be our play. Yeah, XG says yes. That is the way to go, alright.
Okay, what was the ugly stacking? Fifty, eight, three, five, four is fifty-five.
Yeah. There are worse sort of plays. Eight, three, six, five, yeah, fifty-five. Eight, three, five, four.
No, eight, three, five, four and eight, three, six, five are the same. The, the stacking or the splondering are the same.
Yeah, interesting. Okay, now we got double threes. Okay, they, they ran from the back, so this is their last play, twenty-four, eighteen, six to one. Now we got double.
Well, thirteen, ten, two is very clear.
Thirteen, ten, twice, six, three, five, two?
I like that one.
Okay, yeah. Rick, say that again.
And then slide your two builders in the home.
Thirteen, ten, two, maybe six, three ones, yeah.
Okay, uh.
Six, three, five, two, thirteen, ten squared.
Uh-huh. About, I'll just throw out eight to two twice. I don't know if that's a good idea. So here, here's the play Rick suggested.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, here's, here's the one that I threw out. I'm, I'm not really pushing for this. I just wanted to see what it looks like.
The six on your next roll, you're gonna have to run from the thirteen.
Yeah.
And leave a very easy return.
Right. Okay, alright, we're voting. Okay, well, let's do one more play after this and then we'll stop.
Well, yeah, it would be.
Alright, lots of votes, lots of votes for Rick's play. Let's do it. And thirteen, ten. Oh, I, I can see this. This maintains a lot of flexibility. They have a blot in their board. That's, that's.
Eight to two, huh?
Yeah, I, I always see plays like six to three and I, I'm, I'm a little worried about it.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, small difference, not a huge deal. Alright, let's make this our last play and then we'll stop. Double ones.
Twenty-two twice?
Yep, and ten twice.
Alright, say it again.
Easy peasy.
Twenty-two twice and ten twice.
Nine, twice.
Ten, nine.
Yeah, sorry, I mean, yeah. Should we say the starting, uh, play, uh, starting, uh, like point or the, the ending point when we say this?
Yeah, the ending.
Okay, the twenty-one twice and nine twice, yes.
Yeah, okay. Any other options we should consider?
Lot's probably gonna say something like ten, eight, five, four.
Well, you could, you could slot the one.
Yeah, right.
You just slot the one point, just move twenty-two twice.
Right.
And that way you're blocking a little more, though, you, if, if he rolls a three, he can't get out from the seven point.
Alright, I, I feel like we are in agreement that coming to the twenty-one point is the way to go.
Yeah, so we get, so we get out with sixes.
Yeah.
That is not up for discussion.
After the play, we'll be up eleven pip, so we still wanna, you know, gear ourselves towards running plays.
Yeah.
Okay, we're voting and then we'll, we'll call it quits. It looks like most of the votes are for the twenty-one point and the nine point. So let's go ahead and do that and then we'll take a peek. Yeah, not much difference. Even, yeah, two to one, sort of reasonable. But, alright. It's good. Alright, looks like a good place to stop. If you're interested in our study groups or playing in our tournaments, send an email to midatlantic BG at gmail dot com. Thank you all for showing up and participating.